Okay, it's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order.
Roll call. Mayor Beeson?
Present.
Vice Mayor Stover?
Here.
Commissioner Spillman?
Here.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
I'd like to invite everybody to stand for the invitation.
My father, we come to you grateful people thanking you for your blessings of the day. We pray that you would just be with those in our community that are struggling and be with those that are cleaning up after the storm. We thank you for city workers. Thank you for all of our departments. We hope you bless them. We ask your blessing on the commission and I've used a symbol. They have, may they listen well. May people bring forth things with clarity. May you give our commission great wisdom. And we just ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Do we pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions? Thank you.
I move we approve the agenda as written.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of staff and visitors.
And item number one is introduce and swear in newly hired police officer David Treadwell.
It's easy.
Mayor and commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to introduce our newest ACPD officer, David Treadwell. David began employment with our city police department on May 21st, 2025. He is a full-time police officer. David successfully completed all of the rigorous phases of the hiring process, including written exam, clear through all the medical screens. David was employed with Galaxy Technologies prior to coming to ACPD. David and his wife Brianna live in Burden, Kansas with their two children. David is currently assigned to a field training officer on the day two shift, and he will be attending the 348th Basic Training Classic Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center, starting on July 21st. We are excited to welcome David into the Ark City Police Department band.
Administer the oath, please.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. On my honor?
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge?
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity?
My integrity.
My character?
My character.
Or the public trust?
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage?
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others?
Hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions?
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold?
I will always uphold.
The Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
The state of Kansas?
The state of Kansas.
My community?
My community.
And the agency of our community.
Yes, sir.
All come aboard.
Thank you.
How long were you at Galaxy?
I think it's almost four years.
If you were able to handle Mike Kelly for four years, this is, this is gonna be a piece of cake. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Happy you're on board.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
All right. Consent agenda.
Item number one is approve the June 23rd, 2025 regular meeting minutes as a written, and item number two is a resolution authorizing the city of our Kansas City to allocate unplugged healthcare sales tax funds in the amount of $53,664.88 to SCK Health for uncompensated care provided by the community, consistent with ordinance number 2019024481, and the city's intent to annually appropriate available revenues for healthcare purposes.
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion? Thank you. In a second, any, anybody wanna discuss anything? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. New business, Kyle.
Environmental Services Department. Item number one is a resolution authorizing the city of our Kansas City to accept a bid from Myco Diving and Marine Services Incorporated to conduct water tank cleaning and inspections for an amount not to exceed $18,924.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. Apologize for being sweaty and out of breath that ran here. This is to clean the water tanks here in town, specifically the Bryant tank, the Chestnut Booster Station standpipe, and then the charge tank and Clearwell at the water plant itself, those two tanks. And we do this every three to five years. This is required by the state to do, to go in, get it cleaned, get an inspection done, so you know where you're at, and you know that you're not filling all your tanks up with gunk, essentially. Some things to note about this, those divers, you don't have to worry about any sort of contamination or anything because they wear something called a dry, a dry suit, which seals them in completely, and they actually will spray them down with a liquid bleach chlorine, so they're completely decontaminated, and they just go in shifts and they clean routinely until it's.
How long does this take usually? When you're saying in shifts, that makes me think it's gonna be quite, quite the deal.
Yeah, yeah, they, I think they usually bring in about three people, and then they rotate them out as they go, so they can just keep going, because you have to have the tank full, so it's best to get it done as quickly as possible. So it usually only takes about a day per tank, if not faster. Is there any questions?
Is that the only thing after that, that the tanks are already, I mean, inspected and everything's right, then what, we, we don't have to do anything, anything extra?
No, I was gonna say, there's actually, um, we're actually really interested in the Bryant standpipe, as the last inspection revealed that it's going to have some issues coming up in the future, and I think it might be time to actually take it down like we did Goff, and then completely strip it, repaint it, but that entails emptying the tank, and that is gonna be quite the endeavor, as we found out with just Goff.
If you have to do that down there, will we set another tank there, you know, to keep the water flowing, you know, that you won't have no?
So the goal with this one is, we'll probably end up using something like a hydronimatic tank, which is.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, yeah.
Yeah, which is what's used at Chestnut Booster Station, actually, where it just takes the water hammer out of it and it equalizes the water pressure, instead of having a tank do that with its own level.
Yeah, that's how you blow up lines and stuff, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Doesn't say it's gonna be a big project.
This is a little bit off subject, but what's, how, what's the status of the booster station at Chestnut?
Uh, it'll hopefully be up tomorrow morning. They're getting some.
Electricity loss, if that went through at all?
Yes. We're working on it.
That's why you're sweating, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we authorize the city of our Kansas City to accept a bid from Midco Diving and Marine Services Incorporated to conduct water tank cleaning and inspections for an amount not to exceed $18,924.
Second.
Stover?
Take your pick.
I got a question for you.
One more. Okay. Any other discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries?
I'm kinda curious on our water costs, you know, it used to be, we had our old water plant, you know, with chlorine and everything, chemicals we used, it used to be like a dollar or 25,000. You know what it is now?
I'd have to go look at the comp schedule. I know we just recently adjusted it, so I couldn't tell you anything.
I think you're actually asking about the cost of produce.
Yeah, cost of produce.
Cost to produce? Yes, um, actually, that's on a report that I can get to you. Shoot it, drain it, and get it to you.
I know it's a lot cheaper than what our old water plant was.
Yes, yeah, use a lot less chemicals.
Yeah, that's, okay.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kyle. New business.
Fire EMS department. Item number one is a resolution authorizing the city of our Kansas City to accept a quote submitted by Striker to purchase extended warranties for four ambulance cots and four power load systems for an amount not to exceed $16,032.
The cost we have are nearly getting to everything. We feel like it'd be easier to maintain what we have from purchase to another one. A new pot's $33,000. Power load's 40. Um, we could probably get another 10 years out of what we have if we maintain it a little better. This wasn't budgeted for, but I look over my budget this week.
If we have any issue at all, it's gonna be more than what it would cost for the insurance.
Yeah.
So, okay, so this is a no-brainer. For, for.
And this is for one year?
For the layman.
For a year. We have four pots and four power loads, but we cover all of them.
That being said, I make a motion that we approve a resolution authorizing the city of Ark City to accept a quote submitted by Striker to purchase extended warranties for four ambulance cots, four power load systems for an amount not to exceed $16,032.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
And of course, ours is for fitting of our new hires. Uh, Buck, you're running about $4,500 per person. We've got, uh, four coats and five pairs of pants we need to pick up. Sort of, or across, it'll be $18,515 to fit our guys, so. But on the other thing, we forget the people coming in, so.
Right.
That's a plus.
It's a plus.
Uh, question, chief, on some of those older equipment we have, do we sell it out, right? I mean, do, do we?
No, we can't.
Okay.
Um, because you don't know, they would have to be sent off and then checked, cleaned, and then sent back.
So we just dispose of it then?
Actually, we don't. So we'll hold on to it as long as we can. We do have an extractor, so we'll clean them up really good. If we have a new hire that comes in, we'll go all the way through the gear. It might be a mixed match of gear, but we'll fit them first, make sure they're gonna stay there before we just go out and go buy $4,500.
Understand, okay.
Unless we get to that point where we absolutely have nothing and it won't fit, then we have to outfit them.
What about boots?
Boots, they last for quite a while, um, but typically we'll still try to find people that it'll fit. I mean, you can run guys that, you know, might have a size eight, another guy that has a size 15, and, you know, most of us will run 11 and a half or 12, and, you know, we end up with those guys, they're just oddball.
Print newspaper in them.
It would be nice, it would be nice. So, same thing with the hats, I know we talked about that one time before, you know, we don't, we don't pass those things on, mainly because you don't know how many times it gets struck in the head, right?
That being said, I make a resolution authorizing the city of our Kansas City to accept a quote submitted by Delta Fire Safety to purchase, purchase a new bunker gear fitted for new hires for the amount not to exceed $18,515.9.
One question, was this budgeted?
We have a budget for closing allowance. We're actually adding to that budget, the budget allowance, because we're still short individuals. So this way we kinda keep up with it till we find that equilibrium and that. Once we have everybody hired, our turnaround rate has actually dropped significantly, so we're actually keeping employees. Hopefully, we can maintain that, and till we kinda find that, that equal balance, so. But even that gear typically gets switched out every 10 years, too, so.
Keeping employees and reducing turnaround speaking volumes for you guys, so we appreciate that, that turnaround you've done there, where we're not having that problem.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we do. We have another pair of men to interview tomorrow. Wow, that's cool. Yeah, so we're getting it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, well, we have a first and we have a motion and a second. Any other thing? We have one question. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
Don't think so.
City manager updates.
So on their desk in front of you, um, we have two emergency water well repairs. Um, so we went ahead and took care of it, and now we're asking forgiveness, but, you know, with water wells, we, you know, we, we gotta have those things fixed. So well 12 and well 3, um, both had issues and needed to have some emergency repairs done. Um, on well 12, it was a cost of $44,665, and they removed the equipment and rehabilitated the well with acid treatment. Um, achieved a TV survey and flow test it and reinstalled the equipment, and there was some, uh, sandblasting and painting over the pump shafts and some mechanical part replacements, so, um, that's what was on that one. And then on well 3, there was a, they officially removed part of the pump out of the well, I think the pump broke, and, uh, they fabricated a tool to get the pump part out, and then they had to rebuild the bowl assembly and reinstall the motor and stuff, and that was a cost of, um, $35,925, so, um, just wanted to keep you guys aware of that, that we did, uh, need to move on that.
And I'm, I'm not expecting to have all this answered, but on this, uh, on that well 12, it said, uh, it replaced key mechanical parts and did a, I mean, it, the shafts, bushings, and sleeves and covers, so do we have just a connection bust loose, or, oh, Kyle's there. Sorry, I, I didn't see, I'm, I'm sorry, buddy.
Yeah, what happened on that was we were gonna get it rehabilitated, just natural things to do every year.
Right.
Turns out, when we pulled it out, it was way less prime.
Really?
Wearing air.
Okay.
How long's that pump been in there?
Uh, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, long time.
So it's, it's older than you? Okay. All right, thank you, Kyle. I just, when I saw that, I thought it might have been something pretty severe, so.
And then tomorrow, um, Kyle, myself, and Nick, and Spencer, we're gonna head to Topeka, we're gonna meet with Tom Styles with K H and E, and, uh, our rep with Burns and Mack. Um, so what we're getting prepared for is the 2028, um, permit renewal for our wastewater treatment. And so, we're gonna, we know phosphorus will be a big thing there, and we're gonna have to, you know, treat that. We've known that since the last permit, that phosphorus is gonna be the next thing, so, um, we'll try to see if we can get them kind of pinned down on what, what that number looks like, and then, um, and then from there, we can try to decide what the best way to treat that would be, whether it be chemicals, or if there's, uh, some type of mechanical, uh, addition we can make to the plant out there. Um, it'll come down to what the, what gets us to the, uh, permit limit that we need to be at, and then the cost of either capital improvement or the ongoing maintenance and operation costs, so, um, anyway, it'll, it'll take us the next three years to work through that process.
So you're just going proactive right now, just figure out what we're gonna have to do when the time comes?
That way we can, you know, try to help steer the conversation and then, and then work into it, so we don't get a big surprise in three years and say, whoops, we gotta jump now, so.
You gotta make a million-dollar investment right now, Esther.
And then, uh, on the 23rd, a just reminder, if, if you're interested, we have the 13 Ways to Kill Your Community webinar at noon in my office, and then, uh, last week, uh, several of us met with a company that does 3D house printing, and they're interested in looking at some infill type housing on some land, landback properties, so, kind of interesting process. It's a, you know, a big, a big machine that kind of comes in and puts the concrete, like, it's almost like a 3D printer that you might see with plastic, but it prints out houses, and then, uh, they, has a hollow wall that they fill with insulation, and they put the plumbing and wiring and stuff in that, and from start to finish on a house, it takes them 60 days, so, um, we're ways out from them doing anything here, but it was just an interesting concept, and they are interested in, um, doing something in our community, and the.
A question, when they do that, they, they won't go out and build on our landback properties, they'll go out and try to sell something first, and then, and then come back to us and get the property and then put the house on?
Right. They, they would start marketing ahead of time when they're ready to start doing something here. They would get a, get a contract for, for a house with somebody and then, um, and then build it.
So the rumors don't start, we're not gonna buy a bunch of house, we're not gonna buy 15 houses and then try to sell them. They're, they're sold when they come in.
Yeah, and it's not, but just, again, just a different type of housing than, you know, that might make, you know, meet a need, um, in a price range.
Well, they're needing different areas. I mean, they do it in different communities, so, but there's, is need somewhere.
Uh, both CBDG grant applications have been turned in, so we have another $300,000 grant for, um, housing rehabilitation. Um, the difference with this one from the last one is that this would be a citywide, um, instead of having a targeted area, so, um, fingers crossed that we'll, uh, be successful on that. And then when we had the, uh, CBDG grant application for parks, this would be, um, some improvements for Wilson Park, like we talked about in the past. If, um, this grant was for, it's a hair over a million dollars, I don't remember the exact number, but anyway, those applications are submitted, and, um, we should know something on them in the near future.
And the Wilkinson Foundation will do a, uh, are they gonna do a match on that one, or is that, or was that for the pickleball courts?
No, that was for that, for the, for the splash pad and playground equipment.
Okay.
Um, yeah, they have a, they have a match.
If we, if we get it, if we get it, right, yeah.
So we, we got the, uh, the permits from the railroad now to get the sewer line repaired under, uh, the tracks there at, uh, F Street and Birch, and then also to install the new line over for the travel center. Um, we're working on some insurance certificates for the railroad, but, uh, the plan is to start, uh, last week in June, first week of July, so that'll be about two month project on to get those done. Um, I know on the emergency, or the repair over on, uh, F and Birch, uh, they've had to put in bypass pumps now because they're plugged up completely under the tracks now, and so, so it's really, really, we need to get moving on that, but it's just been slow getting the permits to do it. Friday at the work session, I gave you guys a, uh, update on, um, so the 2025 median wage for Cala County increased from 1904 last year to 2027 this year, so the median wage increased to, uh, 2,565 for the county, so just information to keep in mind, but it's just, that's kind of a, a positive move forward. I'm also giving you guys the environmental service report for me on the activities of the environmental service department on the water, wastewater, and collection distribution. Um, we got a report on the Humane Society, their annual report for 2024, and their year-to-date 2025. Financials, and then there is also an update from Cindy Bennett. She has two new programs that she's gonna be doing, uh, in July at the Northwest Community Center. They have some STEM activities. They'll have a, um, one on the July 3rd and one on July 17th, and then they're gonna be doing, uh, July 15th, where they're gonna be making tortillas and weed education with, uh, K-State Research. So they got several more projects from what I gave you guys last week, or last meeting. And then a reminder that we have, oh, I guess, uh, there's also on your desk today, uh, updates from PEC on, uh, on all the projects we're working with on, on, uh, streets and, and utility information and stuff like that, so those are all there.
You wanna give us an update on, on the, the work that the street department, parks department did, uh, this, or was it last Friday, Saturday, maybe? Friday, it must have been Friday, when they put that, they black topped over by the golf course?
Oh, yeah, so, um, we did the, uh, street assessment, um, plan here this past year, where, and we went out and mapped the streets, and so now we have that interactive, uh, street map where we, we know where the problems are, um, and kind of, uh, value which, where we need to go first, what we need to do, and how, and how much it's gonna take to, to do each area, so we can budget and plan, um, future out on streets. So our guys are gonna be trying to do most of that themselves, um, and we have a partnership with a company that, uh, brings in the equipment, and then our guys do the work, um, so we can do asphalt, male and elderly and asphalt work and that type of thing, so we started over on Chardon Lane and, um, Valley View. So they did the first work there with putting asphalt street in there, and now they're working over on 12th Street.
And, and I know, I know, and I just wanted to make it, to put it out there, that I know that maybe these streets are not the streets that people think need to be done first, so why are we doing them right there?
So, yeah, so those were streets that were, that came up as a, as a high need to be fixed, so they're a priority, um, repair. And then we, this year, since it's our first time doing it, we picked some areas that were, um, less traffic and, and less, so that our guys can learn and train without a bunch of traffic around. So those, those streets, um, came up as a priority. They were, uh, streets that needed to be worked on, and then also the, just the fact that it was a good place for them to learn.
Right.
So, and, um, so, yeah, we'll always kind of prioritize where we go with that based on the need of the, of what the plan says, the worst streets.
Thank you.
So, yeah, those turned out really nice, and, and, uh, the guys are.
I know the people in that area really, you know, thank the city for doing that, you know, because there's been, uh, streets like that for years, you know, gravel roads and stuff.
Yeah, by working in-house and using our, our guys, um, it's gonna reduce the cost by a bit, so we'll actually make our dollars go a lot further, um, on, on street repair than what we have been able to do here the last several years, so. And we'll try not to, uh, obviously, there's some, there are some areas where we'll still use grants and some bigger areas, but, um, we'll try not to be quite as reliant on grants and more on the funded. Okay, and then, uh, reminder on the July 11th, we have a, a budget session, uh, work session scheduled. We'll be along with our regular, uh, work session, but this particular one, we'll, we'll be, um, kind of looking at the kind of preliminary, what the budget may look like, and then, um, that, the meeting after that will be the one we need to approve, or not a, uh, resolution that, that sets the dates for a budget hearing, and if we wanna exceed R and R, so keep that one on your list. Um, and then also the League of Municipality Workshop's coming up, not workshop, uh, annual conference, um, in October, so, um, the registration opens July 1st, so if you, if you're interested in going, let us know, because those usually fill up pretty quick, and we want to try to, you know, get rooms, and, and there's kind of a preliminary.
What's the dates on those, on that?
October 9th through 11th.
Okay.
And I put a sheet there for you guys to fill, it's kind of a preliminary agenda.
What's it, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday?
There's just Friday and Saturday.
Finally, I would like to try to, and I'll send an email out and try to get some dates, but before the 11th, we need to have another meeting about the fire station, um, just, uh, what, the direction that we go is gonna make a big difference in, in how we budget this year, so, uh, we really need to put a pin in what that's gonna look like, so that we can set aside those, uh, bond and interest dollars and, and what that mountain will break, so. We're working on some other options, too, so hopefully by, by then, we'll be able to have some options on what, what we have, what direction we can go there, but we all, we all know that the type of problems we're having with the, with the sewers over there and electrical, that we have to do something, just, we gotta figure out what it is. And that's all I've got.
Uh, one other question, hike the bike trail.
Oh, yeah, so the, yeah, the, the SWF permit was finally approved, and I believe Nick told me their plan on starting in the week of the 23rd now.
Are you sure?
Is it installed yet?
I've said I've been sure a hundred times since I've been here, and every time it gets delayed, but yeah, it's, it, it looks like all the hurdles are out of the way on that. Do you know where they're gonna start? I, I've heard, I've heard they were gonna start at, at Paris and work the other way, and, but I don't know for a fact, but I would, I think that's where the most work is, is in that area.
Okay, items for city commissioners.
One question, Ben approached about the house that has collapsed on Sixth Street. Um, I saw a red tag on it yesterday, but of course, the wind took it, so is that something we're gonna get taken care of right away?
I'd have to ask Mike for sure on that one. Um, I don't, I know at an upcoming meeting you got, uh, there's gonna be the, uh, contamination stuff coming up, so that may be on that, or it may have been one you did last year off, that's Mike.
Okay.
It's on Sixth?
Sixth, yeah. That's right down by, uh, pretty well across from where the old Alford Body Shop thing was there.
Oh, I know which one you're talking about now.
Yeah, I mean, it's collapsed.
It burned and then it collapsed, I got, yeah.
Last this week.
We have 415 South 6 on the list.
We have four fifteen South Six on the list, which I don't know if that's.
That's right off the chestnut, yeah.
Five fourteen, sorry, five fourteen South Six on the list.
Just south of Chestnut.
Okay.
That was the one that burned, right?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to thank the city for what they're doing during this time right now, the workers. Um, I know that there's a lot of, uh, complaining, maybe that things aren't getting done as quickly as they'd like, but I would just like for the citizens to have a little grace. These guys have been working for three weeks, well, going on three weeks, well, this is the second week for sure, um, after putting in twelve hour days during the storm, picking up limbs, other stuff like that, the parks department and, uh, street department's working together and they're still getting streets paved like on Friday. They're still getting, um, they're still trying to, to take care of some other stuff, but as it rains all the time, it's hard to get that stuff taken care of. And then, uh, so I want to appreciate that. And then the water department, I know you guys have had a, just a, a mess right now with, with, uh, the flooding and stuff. And, uh, so I want to thank you guys as well. You guys put in a lot of time and over, overtime and it's nasty, dirty work. As I was driving through town this morning after the, the storm, um, there was trash everywhere. It was Tuesday, so Main Street had, had their trash cans all out and they all got blown over. And, uh, I would say probably our, our sanitation workers took care of the, the, uh, lion's share of that. So I want to thank them for that as well. It's, it's a thankless job, but they do a great job. Um, last thing, for the citizens, have some grace with your neighbors. Yes, lawns are getting a little high right now. We're not gonna go overboard on right now. It's raining, it's wet, they can't mow them. So when it dries up, if you got a deadbeat neighbor, we'll take care of them then, but until then, let's just have a little grace. Anything else?
Thank you.
Um, comments from the audience?
So I moved the Simon sheet, could be seen. So up first we have Nancy Holman. And she would like to talk about defunding of the library. Is Nancy here?
Yep. Could you come up here, please?
I'm just curious about the rationale for that because the library is a hub of the community. And I myself have been saved on numerous occasions by services that they offer. And I just remember as a child, that was my favorite place in town. And I just, I would really hate to see them going back to that from the heart. Because they haven't been using apparently what was, you know, appropriated for them in the first place. I just want to speak out for people who left the library.
I, I think it would be a big mistake to cut that.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, Jerry Straley and his topic is sleeth truck stop in the hospital.
My name's Jerry Straley, I live at six oh eight North First Street, Arkansas City. I really had planned on not talking tonight, but over the last few weeks, I've been out and about introducing myself to people in the community, making appearances at meetings and stuff. Uh, I've been asked over and over and over again, and yes, I was not a fan of the way the city commission did this two years ago. But what is up with this sleeth addition? The low income housing that you guys gave away eight acres, eight acres of land. Also, I've been asked, truck stop, two years, what's up with that? You guys gave them twelve acres of land. Third thing is, is the one million dollars the hospital borrowed from the city taxpayers four years ago. They were supposed to pay that back in one year. Everybody's asking me about this in the community. Uh, the only other thing I want to say before you guys reply to what I asked, if you would, I appreciate it. Uh, I have been in contact with the governor's office, they got back with me a couple of times. And Governor Kelly is wanting to come to South Central Kansas Hospital, meet with me and do a tour and highlight the Medicaid cuts and all that because of everything that's going on in Washington. So I don't know if I need your approval for that or what, but I'm planning on getting ahold of the CEO at the hospital. Ms. Kelly's office called me today and said they're just trying to find out a right schedule and she's very interested in coming to Arc City. So I have been busy on that aspect, that's pretty much all I got.
I would say if Governor Kelly wants to call and make it a, a, a date with them, I don't think we're gonna have any issue with that. So I think that'll take care of itself. Um, and this is gonna sound probably a little harsh, but all three other questions have been answered throughout the last year at city council meetings.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
At city council meetings.
Yeah.
And at work sessions, it's been discussed in length with updates weekly.
The rumor is sleeth addition is gone.
That's not a rumor, that is, this, that's correct.
Okay.
So I, yeah, we never, that property was never, never exchanged. It, the city still owns it.
Right.
There was, there was an agreement if they move forward with certain steps, but that never happened. And so, yeah, the city still owns the property.
Okay.
So that didn't go.
Truck stop, no walls yet.
That is a, that is a private, that's a private organization.
Well, I don't know how soon you've been out there, but they're, they're putting out steel, steel right now as we talk.
Yeah.
They had a back, they had a back order on their steel and stuff for several months and now supposedly it's coming in and, but they're putting up the, uh, main beams and stuff like that. So we ought to start seeing a lot faster work, what they have been.
I understand that, but everybody's been asking me, and that's why I thought I'd ask you guys. Uh, everybody is comparing it to Starbucks, uh, tore down the bowling alley, built a Starbucks in less than sixty days.
Some businesses are more efficient than others.
I know, I know, I understand that, I fully understand that.
All right, thank you.
Hospital, where are we at?
Your time's up, Jerry. We'll have to get with you another time to answer those, but yeah.
When I go out and about, because I already made three appearances in the three organizations, I've had a lot of people ask, what is this? We know you were against the million dollars that they give, you guys gave, I told you guys.
Your time's up, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Um, next up is, Nick, you're not up yet, can please have a seat? Uh, Cindy Freeland. And to discuss, discuss, uh, defunding of the library.
Okay.
I, I just heard, uh, today, uh, that there is, and I know you only have so much money to go all the way around, but I, I really think it's important, uh, the funding there, uh, couple, three reasons. One, when we travel or when we move, we always look at the, look at the hospitals, look at the library. And I think it is important to have an efficient, well, running, good-looking old library. Secondly, uh, every summer for about fifteen years, we had grandchildren here, we were at the library all the time. Now I've got a ninety-six-year-old mother, she has her Kindle, so she likes books. So we're there every week getting books for her. So it goes, you know, world reasons why the, the family needs to stay there and have good luck.
I'd like to, to address the two ladies that, that had talked about the library. I got a call from Mindy, uh, I'm gonna say you, four thirty-ish, four forty-five. She said, hey, I just, I, she goes, I know we spoke this morning, we got things worked out a little bit. We did have a meeting with her, um, trying to figure out the best way to go forward. Uh, so we, she, we talked this morning as well. Um, I don't want to say what's all, was it, we have a pretty good relationship right now on what's going on, and she gave me a heads up. She said, hey, you're probably gonna have some people show up. So we were fully expecting you and we fully understand and we appreciate you showing up.
Well, she is really.
She's passionate.
And she should be.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And she just put it on group and said.
Yes.
This is what's happening and we all settle payments for it, so.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Okay, and then Mickey Schmidt.
Okay.
Okay, picking up where I left off. You know, for those of you that don't know me very well, it's kind of hard to believe that after being almost costed by somebody up here, I'm still willing to jump into this race and talk about one thing that I've been working on for three years now and basically have been treated like kind of the people who don't get the services they need at the Northwest Community Center. So where I left off last week, after giving a lovely cries to somebody in the audience, was discussing the statement of organizational values for the city of Arkansas City. Okay? Reliability, stewardship of resources, of non-discriminatory behavior, professionalism and personal courtesy. Pride and ownership, programs that address citizens' needs. And I believe children are citizens of Arc City, correct? Yes, that is true. Okay, let's move on to what the Northwest Community Center says happens there. A hub for people of all ages to come together, learn and have fun. Run by Cindy for twenty years. The kids come in after school, we do activities. They can get on the computers to do their schoolwork or apply for jobs. On Thursdays, we have an outreach program with different activities. And here it gives an inventory, which I've asked two of the people in this room to help me get as a citizen of this community. If you've ever been into a elementary school P E room, you would know what equipment was for children, okay? Ping pong, volleyball, air hockey and basketball. Oh, and Cindy conducts dances, dance classes every Monday and Tuesday for forty-five dollars. And has for the last twenty years for whoever doesn't really know this. So we have a city employee, right? Getting paid through a contract for two dollars and fifty cents an hour, two dollars and fifty cents an hour, okay? In twenty-twenty-three, we all know this building is a lost league. In twenty-twenty-three, there were thirty-four total rentals for a total income of sixty-three hundred and fifty dollars. How close that was?
Do you know?
I will be back in two weeks, once again.
All right, anything else from the commission?
We adjourned.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.